9:45, we'll call the meeting into order. And we do have a forum present, and we've got one in the kitchen.
So Mayor, we have two topics for you tonight. The first is related to the overlay district, the I-35 overlay. And we talked with you about it several meetings ago, and you requested some additional information on those areas where staff had flexibility in approving variances. And so that'll be your first item, and then we wanted to give you an update on our animal services volunteer program. It is our most successful volunteer program in the city. We're gonna, we've got so many volunteers that we're going to be changing some of our processes and rules, and wanted to brief you on it before we did so. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Richard.
Thank you, Donna. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As Donna mentioned, this is a continuation of our discussion from the work session on October 30th. We put together kind of a chart that kind of lays out all of the administrative modifications and the alternative standards. This chart now only covers the core sub-district, basically just to kind of show you how all this will work as staff is working with developers on projects within the corridor district. The transition sub-district will be very, very similar, but keep in mind that that is a little bit less intense district, so most of the standards will mirror the core sub-district, except for like the intensity and building placement issues. I do want to call out, point out to you in the items that are highlighted in blue, that is to specifically highlight specific standards for administrative modifications. Those are gonna appear in select locations throughout the ordinance, and it is stated in text exactly what can be done. It doesn't really apply to the general rule of a numeric change that's within 10 percent that would be allowed as administrative modification. So those are highlighted kind of throughout the document. But primarily, I just wanted to kind of, I think this chart shows fairly well that the 10 percent is fairly minor in almost all of the categories, and I'll kind of click through and point out some examples, like a residential parking ratio, the requirement is 1.5 spaces per unit, where the administrative modification allowed for staff would be 1.35. So just a very small amount of flexibility in there. I also want to kind of point out, too, that these, they can't, an applicant can't just ask for these just because they don't feel like doing it, or it's gonna cost them more money. They really have to have a specific reason, you know, a practical difficulty on the site that that's reasonable. And I'd like to point to our HGP process. I think that has been a very successful process, and staff really works behind the scenes with the developer to negotiate the best possible outcome. So by the time it gets to the P&amp;Z or the council, a lot of discussion and give and take has been put into the proposal to bring the best possible proposal forward for the city and for the residents to enjoy for many years to come. And I'll just click through, and if you have any specific questions on these, again, like the awnings and canopies, 75 percent of the sidewalks are out of canopies. With the 10 percent applied, it would reduce it down to 67.5. So it really wouldn't be noticeable once the, once the project is built and on the ground. And again, you can see some of the specifics. This one specifically is a non-numerical that allows staff to work with an applicant. If there is a specific drought tolerant plant they'd like to use, something that we can take a look at. But again, the basic ordinance is always gonna be the guiding principle, and staff will take those requests very, very seriously, and you know, may not approve all of them. Again, it just, it allows us that ability if staff feels that it's reasonable and appropriate given the situation. Like loading area screen height, the minimum of eight feet, it could be reduced to 7.2, just depends on the situation and the proposal that the applicant brings forward. So that's, that pretty much outlines all of the different modifications. And again, the other two columns cover what P&amp;Z will have the authority acting as the corridor overlay board, and then the final column shows what items we come to council. So with that, I just think we're looking, you know, for direction. Do you want to point out at the very end, we do have a small little note, and we are working with our legal team, making a few little adjustments here and there, but we're getting very close to kicking off and finalizing the project and the ordinance and moving forward with adoption by right at the beginning of the year. And with that, I'm entertaining any questions?
Anybody having questions?
Just a couple. And just, so this is all gonna work the same as it works today, in that what we've added is a layer of staff discretion. Once it exceeds that layer of staff discretion, it's gonna go to P&amp;Z or the overlay district board.
Correct.
The overlay district board then gets this expanded range of discretion. And that lines up with what P&amp;Z has now, or is that a brand-new creation?
Brand-new creation.
It's a brand-new creation.
Okay. So I have just a little bit of heartburn on that one, because right now, let's take brick facade. So that exterior wall facade, they can drop it to 32 percent, and that, so what happens if they drop it to 32 percent on the masonry, if I'm reading that right, exterior wall facade composition? So developer comes in, says, "Well, we want to do 32 percent of the exterior," and P&amp;Z says, "Good, yes." Now, we're gonna have to do a major, a supermajority to override that, or?
He'd never vote to.
No, their decision would be final at that point. And again, keep in mind, we'll have the staff-
Hey, I'm sorry. So if they want to go to 32 percent, it looks like it's an alternative standard, which means it would only be a recommendation by the overlay board, you can make the final decision.
Just, I'm, because I've just heard an answer that's slightly different than that.
Or like 33 percent, they would have the authority to approve.
I'm really bad at math, so it could be me. I thought if it's up to 28 percent, then it would be, oh, no, no, see, yeah, I'm bad at math. No, you're right.
It's reading. It's reading we gotta worry about.
Yeah, it's 60 percent of eight.
Right.
So that's what the actual percentage would be on masonry coverage on that, on that one.
So as I read this, the developer could come in and say, "I only want to do a third of my wall, 33 percent, as masonry," and that could be approved without council ever seeing it.
Correct. But again, you gotta factor in, like I said, staff will make a recommendation, and it has to be based on a practical difficulty or existing site conditions. And there may be a situation where that may be perfectly acceptable, given there may be a development already in place that looks good, and it would look, it would, it would create a situation where you wouldn't have the compatibility, and so they may ask for something to match one of the existing buildings that's, that's in the general area for more continuity.
Sure. Well, we may not want continuity. We wanna, we may want to raise the standard.
Right. Or recently, there's been a lot of new materials that have come on the market that are very different, and they're just not your standard brick and stone.
We should say the Mary Kay.
Right. Or just a lot of, actually, you see them a lot on hotels. Hotels have been pioneers on using new material. I went to an AIA tour of homes the other day for a lot of modern-looking homes, well beyond a million-dollar homes, that have a lot of different metal types on the facade of them. So, so that would also allow unique and different architecture to be developed. I think that's-
I'm sure the council would never see that.
No. As in, not, you will see it, but not to make a decision on approval.
Unless they go over that threshold.
Unless they go over the threshold.
And you know, like I said, make a real good example of authority that a board has is our Old Town Design Review, you know. Council granted them a lot of authority to have some discretion on design issues.
And we've had those conversations. The other one that I thought was, that kind of gave me a little bit of heartburn, was the greenery. Where is that one? See, I read this stuff. Is it greenery or trees?
Each time.
Trying to find it. Yes, parking lot, what, one tree per nine versus one tree per 13? Again, that just, it kind of stuck out to me as, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't provide an alternative, or maybe a, maybe an impact fee, they could come back to it, something, something like that. Yeah, page four. You know, if we're, if we're trying to extend the green, and I don't have a way to do that as council, this just seems like this is a great way to not extend the green pretty quickly.
On those items, you could actually, as part of, so none of these are actual, what the way we do now, which is complete waiver of the reform. It'll be something that would be negotiated. So if it's not, if they can't do 13 trees, I mean, if they can't do nine trees, they have to go to 13, one for 13 parking spaces, basically reducing the number of trees, then it could be, okay, you've reduced the number of trees because you can't fit them on your parking lot, but in addition, pay it so much.
Yeah. Do a modification or something like that.
Exactly. So that's something-
So then in policy?
Okay.
So, and do you think about the HGP process? You've seen a lot of that, where we've worked with the developer to say, "You may not be able to meet it in this way, but we're gonna require, you can't have, you don't, you don't have room for the trees, perhaps along, you know, the rightway, but we're gonna require more in another location." So, I mean, staff is gonna work very hard to get the best development possible.
So what this does, it opens a door for that, for those alternatives to be discussed, whereas it's just saying no.
And the flip side of that is, if you, this kind of removes some of the, "Well, I don't know if council's gonna buy off on that," right? So you don't have that hammer, or I worry that you won't have that hammer.
You do have that hammer.
Still have the hammer.
You do, once it gets to 32 percent.
Well, you, number one, you have it at the staff level. If it's just the minimum type requirement, if the staff doesn't think it looks good, they're not gonna go with it.
Okay.
Number two, you're gonna have it at P&amp;Z. So you have the same issue with P&amp;Z to say, "We don't think they're gonna support it."
And number three is, if the staff and P&amp;Z are not agreeing, it automatically comes to it.
Right.
However, just as a, to make you, you know, feel better if you think that's, but there's some things here that you could face, let's take, it seemed like there's a lot of issues with the, with the masonry standards or the building envelope. If that's something you want to take out of the discretion, or make sure that those can just basically, after the staff's discretion that just comes to P&amp;Z, direct them to council, they could do that, too. There's some things-
I just want to make sure that it's got good bones. I mean, you'll hear me harp on that, I am not an exterior designer. I don't care about the fenestration of a building, I really don't. I just, it's, third and fourth use has got to be a viable third and fourth use, and I just want to make sure that, you know, when a developer comes in here, they know that we're not trying to replace a metal building with a metal building with a little stucco on it.
But no staff has those same goals.
Your direction's been very, very clear.
You know, a lot of time and effort has gone to this ordinance, and it's based upon, you know, the redevelopment plan, you know. We realize that this is, we got one chance to do it right.
Yeah.
Or have to wait another 40 or 50 years. And I think staff feels that we've got a good bones here to recreate the entire corridor, give it a new look, and a new identity for Louisville, as 200,000 vehicles travel the interstate every day.
I've heard it's more than that.
Could be.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the education, the more detail. Couple of these I'd worry about, but I don't see here any, here anything that I would not be against. So I mean, if I don't feel like it's getting the sort we need to get, I'm sure we can always come back at it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that's it.
Okay, so I think next up, we have our volunteer program.
Um, okay. Uh, how do you use that? Just-
Right, right.
So first of all, it's good to see everybody. My name is Crystal. I'm the field supervisor with Louisville, or with Animal Services here in Louisville. I am here today to talk to you a little bit about our volunteer program and the redesign that we have put a lot of thought and effort into over the past several years. It has grown exponentially, as I'll get into in about a second, but I do want to take a moment to speak a little bit about these two volunteers. The one on the left is Jim, with our senior animal care specialist, Michelle. He is this year's Volunteer of the Year. He does about 25 hours of volunteer service a week, and he is one of the hardest workers I have ever seen. He comes in and cleans, and organizes, and designs, and helps us just with whatever project we have going on. And then this is Michelle. She has been with us since the inception of the program, it's about four years, and she volunteers every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, all day long. So these individuals are some of the most amazing people. I have been to a concert with her. She is awesome. She's really great to get to know, you know, and it's just, they're truly incredible people that are willing to give their time. So a little history about our volunteer program. It started in 2013, soon after we moved into the new building. And in every year, we have added a little bit extra, based on the growth and demand of everything that, that all the volunteers are coming in and saying, "Hey, let's try this," or, you know, and so we're receptive to these ideas, and as long as we're capable of adding these different programs, we do. So in 2014, we started Jog-a-Dog. It's a very popular program, predominantly where most of our volunteers have interest is to take these adoptable dogs for a walk around the park, which we have a beautiful location, water setting, everything. The dogs love to go for a swim, and so that's one of our most popular programs. In 2015, because we had enough volunteers at that point, we were able to start off-site adoptions, going to PetSmart and local places, trying to promote adoptions in addition to just being at the shelter and having that. So we're trying to get out, but without volunteers, we would not be able to do it just with staff. So it is because of them that we're able to do that. And then in 2016, we had so many volunteers, we were really struggling to keep it all with, in a notebook with paper. That's how we were managing all of our volunteers, and so we invested in a program called Logistics. It is a volunteer management software. It allows us to schedule, we can send emails out from there, and it keeps all of our information in one database. The volunteers can log on and schedule their own time, instead of just showing up, which is one of the issues that we were having. So currently, we have 164 volunteers, and of those volunteers, they make up about 4,000 hours in a given year. So they are coming in and helping do a lot of things, and we estimate that about 25 percent of those hours, so about 1,000 hours, is committed to cleaning, which helps with the shelter staff do what we do on a day-to-day basis, which is, you know, cleaning kennels or doing dishes or laundry, things like that, which, if you extrapolate that even further, it doesn't come out to very much money, but where it really helps us is the quality of life that they are providing for these animals when they're spending time with these dogs and cats or ferrets or whatever we have at the shelter at the time. They're getting to know these animals, they're learning their personalities, which helps us get them adopted, because they're, they're able to spend time with these dogs and cats and animals where staff isn't necessarily able to do so. So, you know, that's, that's definitely something that's awesome, but the downside of that is, the very bottom you'll see of that 164, about 15 are consistent. So, and two of those are those people in the pictures that you saw earlier. So that is just the nature of a volunteer program. It's unpredictable at its heart, but we are trying to, we're proposing a better way of doing this to increase staff efficiency and also to get a better return on our investment. So what happens is that these people are coming in, and we're spending three orientations with them multiple times a month. It's about 20 hours a month, if not more, that we are having to do orientations with these people that are coming in, and then they stick around for maybe one or two times, and then they're gone. So, but that's okay. We want these people to come in, and we're trying to set up a structure that is, that meets everybody in the middle. There are gonna be people that want to come in one or two times, and there's gonna be people that want to come in and stay, stick around. So our proposed structure is a tier-based structure, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second, but we are one of the first, if not the first municipal shelter to do something like that in the area. So one of the goals is, is that we are hoping to do our first set of orientations, our pre-orientations, online. Everything will be done online, which gives staff a little bit of time back in their pockets to do other things at the shelter. And so over time, this is the structure that's proposed. The top part, which is tier, tier one, tier two, and tier three, that's really the meat potatoes of it all. So tier four and tier five, that's more of a long-term goal, but I do have volunteers that would fit in this right now. But tier one is really where everything is gonna be, a lot of our effort on the front end is gonna be placed. So we also want to create a really interesting culture at the shelter with our volunteers, which is the purpose of the team names. And in addition with that, as they move up the tier, which, you know, Team Rough Ride, of course, this is the T-shirt that our first, our Level One volunteers are wearing right now. We didn't think that we needed to change it. This was actually voted on a few years ago by the volunteers. But they're coming in after they attend their orientation online, and then they have their main orientation at the shelter. So then, once they've done 60 hours of service, they're unlocking more rewards. They're, they're able to do more things, including Jog-a-Dog or special events. They're getting more training as, with the longer that they're there. So we're not necessarily having to invest so much time for people that aren't wanting really to be there in the long term. We're investing more and more time with people that are sticking, sticking around. We're offering more training to them. So and then tier three, after about 120 hours of service, they get another T-shirt, and they're able to do off-site adoptions at that point. And then the long term, we're also looking, you know, to do additional things with tier four and tier five. So our short-term timeline, if we'd like to just get up and running with this thing, we want to get all this stuff created online with the background check and the orientation. We need to get the video made, and we're hoping to achieve that in December, and then get up and running by January. And then in February, we would be having our first set of main orientations, which would still be performed in-house. And then our long-term timeline, there's a lot of potential here, there's a lot of possibilities and a lot of room for growth. We could do a lot with the way we've set the structure up. We're able to potentially start offering field trips, like rent a dog for a day, things like that, or, you know, something that I thought of is approaching maybe some local businesses, and if they have, "Hey, I'm a volunteer here with Animal Services in Louisville or volunteer in general with Louisville," and have local businesses offer maybe 5% off at their, at their shop. So there's a lot of things that we can do in the long term, and, including adding additional training. So that's all I have, but do y'all have any questions for me, anything I can answer?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so you talked about rewards. What do you, describe the rewards.
The T-shirts would be one of the rewards, so as they move up in the tiers, they would receive another T-shirt. They also would be rewarded in the sense that they can do more at the shelter and participate in more, because what is happening right now is a lot of volunteers are coming in that have only been in once, maybe twice, and aren't really familiar with how we are operating at the shelter. The more time you put in, the more you understand and learn about, you know, what our adoption policies are, why, why aren't we a no-kill shelter? If you're, if you're not putting in the time, people generally don't know those answers as well as people that have been there a lot longer. So as they are there longer, you know, they're, now they're trained more, they're getting more training, and then they're also able to go and participate Jog-a-Dog and special events, those things that everybody wants to participate in. They've got to earn it.
I guess I was anticipating something else.
Like, like what?
I, you know, I, I'm not telling you go do this, but, you know, Volunteer of the Month parking spot, some special, you know, bit like somewhere between free and a minimum discount for ball, depending on your tier, just something more tangible, that's not, I guess, you volunteer, now that you're, you know, among the 10 percent that does 90 percent of the work, which is classic volunteer, you know, results, you get something outside the scope of getting to volunteer more.
I would say that all of those things are possible, and it's not like we haven't thought of all the things. We're just trying to get up and running at this point. I think that that has been one of the biggest frustrations across the city, is that we have put this on hold, so we've put a lot of time and effort into making sure that when we do unveil and move forward with this, we're doing it the right way. And as we move along, we'll implement additional things such as, you know, a parking space, or, you know, there's a lot of ideas down the road that we would like to see implemented, but we're careful about how we're doing that. We don't want to just do everything all at once and then fall flat on our face.
One of the other things I thought Crystal didn't mention, but I think it's really helpful with the colored T-shirts, is that with, they were, they were mentioning to me that getting into the animal shelter, you never know who's gone through what training, so you may have someone who has minimal training in the back, and you have to kind of, you know, you don't, you may not know them as a volunteer, but you'll have to pull them aside, figure out what training they've gone through. This will automatically be able from a distance to tell them, to tell us, "Okay, you should not be in the back area," or, you know, that type of thing, so.
I think to the training that they're gonna focus on, we're gonna try to do, help them create some in-house videos, so everybody kind of gets that same training. And as they move up, they get more training, and Crystal's taught me a lot about the type of training they need, and so you look at some of the situations in the shelter, which are very, very challenging. You have volunteers that are exposed to euthanasia, and that's a difficult thing, and that's very, very hard on people. So, you know, there are some actually, you know, like state-level type programming to help people deal with those type situations. And so we want to build in as much training for our volunteers as we can, and I think this type of tiered program will help us do that.
I think it makes a lot of sense for that. I just, you know, thought, as I read through the program, I thought I was gonna hit that page where, you know, for your return for, you know, your tremendous hours and support, here's some benefit besides more hours and more support. So, and I'm not trying to make light of it, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at other, I mean, you know me, I've been in a lot of volunteer organizations, and so typically as you, because you're really hardcore volunteers, you certainly have ways to reward them that are more, I guess I'd say tangible.
Cangible. I think you're absolutely correct, and those type of things do need to be built in.
Or at least recognition.
Absolutely.
You know, maybe, I said, pardon, you know me, I throw stuff out there, and I don't mean actually gonna do that, you know, but no, pardon. But, you know, it might be something in the lobby that's like a big sign that says, "Our Volunteer of the Month," or so-and-so, or, you know, "Our Legend Volunteers are," you know, I just, it's recognition, it's tangible.
Free hug from each council.
Yes, free hug from each council.
And I think it's-
Or not a free hug.
I think those type of things are critical, absolutely correct, and so it's something that we'll work to build in as quickly as we can. We just, this is kind of your basic program.
This is the framework.
This is the framework.
I just thought I would get to the end and see the reward structure that kind of went with it, and the reward structure turned out to be, you can volunteer more and expand your volunteer role, but that's kind of a, that's kind of a natural anyway, that the longer you volunteer, the more you get to do, and-
Right, you know, some of that, those are kind of the plum, you get the plum task. And so this Jog-a-Dog is a big deal. Everybody wants to do Jog-a-Dog. "I want to do Jog-a-Dog, they won't let me do Jog-a-Dog."
No, I can see that one is kind of a tangible reward.
Right, exactly. So, but you're absolutely correct, and we need to work on trying to add some over time. And a lot of times, it's good to ask the volunteers what's meaningful, and then try to build that in.
Absolutely. So I will throw that other thought out there, though, I was somewhat serious, or maybe serious completely, about furball. If you're in Legends, your admission of furball is free.
Furball may not occur every year.
I know, but if and when.
If that poor Crystal had to work hours and hours on furball, we don't, we don't know if we'll do another furball, so.
There may never be another furball, but just-
But maybe something like a furball.
Yes. Or, you know, is there an end-of-the-year party for the volunteers?
Yes.
So some, you know, recognition items, or, I mean, if you go scour the earth, I'm pretty good digging up freebies from companies and going, "Here's a basket full of gift cards," or something.
Okay, we are putting a name on that one.
Oh, great. Because everybody gets me up now.
I just heard a new volunteer, Crystal, a new volunteer for you.
If I may speak to that for just a second.
Here comes the compassion.
So we do have things that we are already doing for the volunteers. In addition to the, to the week that we spend honoring their service, which happens every April- April, along with our, the volunteer of the year award, which is a plaque at the shelter that is, that is added to every year. We do have our quarterly meetings, we meet with them. We are working on getting a Facebook page or something where we can communicate openly with each other. Right now is a little challenging, but we are working through those issues. And we do have an end-of-the-year party. It's my favorite party all year long, and it is a, it's a volunteer potluck, where all the volunteers are coming to the shelter, we have a great time. I typically, my gift to them is I put together a video of all of their hard work for the year, including when I've reached out to our great adoptions that we've had, and I've gotten pictures from them, from these animals in their new homes. So I put that together for them typically every year. I didn't do it last year, didn't have the time after furball, but this year and the previous years, I've done that, and they really enjoy it. So it is, we do what we can for them, we, you know, and it's definitely something that we want to increase and improve on, so we haven't forgotten about them.
So I have a suggestion, unless I've missed it, some of the council invite.
To the, to the Christmas party?
Sure.
Okay.
Because I've never seen it made for that.
It's, it was more of an in-house thing for, you know, our shelter, but we can look at that.
Yeah, I think it's just shelter, I've never been invited either, if that makes you feel bad.
Well, there you are.
That is a good, good guess.
I have one question. How are we going to reach out? You said we have like fifteen consistent volunteers. What are the plans to reach out to expand that, to communicate throughout Louisville?
Well, typically what happens is when we do open those proverbial floodgates again, we get a surge of people that come in, and it's, it is very much up, like high ups and high downs, or low downs. And it's, it's one of those things that we'll get a whole bunch of people, and it's all about their interest and how quickly we can get them in the door and get them trained. But with this new design, they're able to do that first set of training on their own instead of having to wait for us to do the next set of pre-orientations. And keep in mind, we're doing a pre-orientation, a main orientation, and then an active orientation, because there's so much information that we're trying to share with them. Initially, when we first started, it was just one orientation, which was fine for just your handful of people. But we were getting about twenty or thirty people in one orientation, and we typically keep around one or two.
I had a question at the beginning. Is this like sixty hours of service, is there a time period during which those sixty hours would have to be accumulated, or, so if somebody comes in and does twelve hours every year for five years, that would put them at the sixty?
You can achieve it as fast as you want or as slow as you would like. So we would hope that people achieve it, you know, very consistently, but I understand life is what it is, and volunteers come where they can.
The only thing I'm thinking of is, you're talking about doing, one of, doing additional training as they're going along. And from my educational background, you know, if it takes too long, they forget about what they've learned. And so if it extends over too great a time, you may have, you have to be doing some retraining all the time, that sort of.
And those, I feel, are those just special dynamics that we will just have to deal with. You know, it's, volunteers, they're all different, and they all expect different things, and they all want, they all have different goals. We do work with National Honor Society, and they're there for a very short period of time, trying to earn their hours just for the year, and they're gone. So I feel like it's a great thing that they're able to come in and contribute, but, you know, that's, that's a good thing. Or they'll come back after the summer's over, and here we are, four or five months later, and they're strolling back in. So that is a problem, or an issue that we'll have to just work through.
So one last comment, I'll reply to that request. Send the city council, the city man, or the ACMS, and everyone.
Okay. Lovely. Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Nina.
You're welcome.
So a couple, a couple of quick, go ahead.
No.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. Like, like all of our departments, you guys do a tremendous amount, but very little, and I wanna thank you for that. Having gone through the old process and the new process both for my, my two fur babies, you guys do a great job. Very excited to see how this plays out. I know, because you're dealing with all sorts of different groups. One thing that I'm really excited to see is that you're dealing with kind of the emotional fatigue piece of this as well, because it's a unique angle that you guys have to deal with. And so I really appreciate you looking after the mental health of those folks who are volunteering with us, as well as staff. I'm very excited to see this. I think it follows the model that you guys have been doing for the last couple of years, which is slow and steady. You know, bite off the bites that you can chew, make sure they're really positive and powerful, and then just keep working from that. So I'm really excited to see you guys moving forward on this. I think it's great.
Thank you. Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. We are just slow and steady, we're trying new things, you know, treading the water, seeing what works, but doesn't work. You know, take, for example, your question about, you know, if they don't come in for a while, we have a five-hour requirement that the majority of people don't follow. But I don't want to say you can't come in and volunteer because you haven't contributed your five hours this month, or something like that. I don't wanna turn people away. I wanna create something that opens the doors, that is easy for somebody to come in and not feel guilty that they weren't here this last month or something. So that's, that's definitely.
Okay, anybody else?
One thing I would add, council, is if you think back to the old shelter on Treatment Plant Road, we never had an issue coordinating volunteers. It's because you guys strategically placed that shelter at the back of a beautiful park, one of the most beautiful parks in the Metroplex. It really encourages people to come in and volunteer their services, so.
It's a nice building.
It's a beautiful building, but the staff's just done a tremendous job, moving, taking that beautiful building and moving forward with, I think, one of the most outstanding animal control programs in the Metroplex.
More down to the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna start off the invocation by Councilman Troyer, and pledge to the American Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones. Campus election resolution, then the presentation, and Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones is gonna be doing that, and his, hopefully Brett's okay. Have you heard from him, Don?
Richard? The, the awards being accepted by you, Ron?
Our planning staff.
Yeah, by the planning staff.
He's gonna do it, or?
You have someone in from your association that's gonna present it?
They were unable to make it.
Okay, so you guys are gonna do it?
Councilman Jones, or Deputy Mayor-
We'll just read it, we'll just read it.
Heard from Brent.
Oh, Brent? I thought you were talking about the item, sorry.
You hadn't heard from me?
I have not, sorry.
I need a hearing, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Unless you-
That was good, I heard.
Okay, public hearing, item one. Item two.
I need to sit down there.
Oh, yeah. I had that underlined right here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item two, okay.
So I may, I may jump to an end seat, just, I don't wanna throw you again.
You threw me off last time.
I threw me off, it's okay.
You're standing down there, it's an attack. I'm worried about Brent down there. And Lady Wine's not here. Okay, item three. Word of consent. Five, six, seven, eight. You want to make any comments about these, the manager, just regular things?
The seven, I would always complain that we get less money every year, but it doesn't do me any good to complain, so. Eight and nine are very standard contracts, no changes in pass, as far as the formulas. Chief, you have anything to add that you don't have?
I think they, they increase it over every year for our agents and stuff, but I'm not even-
Item ten. Item eleven.
This one's a little irritating, I will comment on that. So we started with a project that should've cost around eighteen thousand, because of numerous delays by KCS Railroad, it's now up to seventy-one thousand. David, I don't know if you wanna add?
You know, the railroad has special microphone everywhere.
I don't care.
Gonna cost two-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
Somehow I think our graffiti of removal program needs to up its rates.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it's a first thing I've done. So, you know, not only do we pay for their consultant, but then they add overhead, and then they got their own review time to pay charges for. And we've been, been to council just previously, and generally what the issue is, is we have had a problem with them changing the viewers in the middle of the process. So every time they change the viewers, we kinda took a half a step back, and, you know, I think we're probably getting close, but it's been long coming.
Very frustrating.
So it operates as a profit center?
Yeah, it kinda looks like that.
Got to do it somewhere.
Very frustrating.
And of course, if they have to approve it or you can't build it.
Right. So this project's taking much longer than it should have. It was a difficult project to begin with.
Yeah.
For that, this is-
Okay, item twelve.
Judge Holman is here. Did you have anything on that one, Judge?
You have a question, I'll get it answered.
Item thirteen. Item fourteen.
What was the logic of having, sorry, item thirteen, what was the logic of having council review that every two years?
I wish I knew the answer to that. Melinda and I both looked at that and cannot remember. I think it may have had to do with some concerns council had that they were seeing it on a regular basis, because at that time, you were having a number of incidents that triggered it. But we haven't seen that, and quite frankly, staff didn't remember, and it has not come back to you as it should have. And so it seems to me that when we have a triggering event, that's the time to bring it to the council.
Okay. Item fourteen.
Very cool.
Yeah, this is a really good, all grants are good, especially ones that don't have a city match, and this one doesn't have a city match. But I think it's one that will be extremely useful, especially this full-scale exercise on terrorism. I think that is something that would be difficult for us to do without a third-party consultant, but I think that is something we should plan to do at least every three to five years. So I'm very, very excited that we received the funding for this project. Where's Tom? Did you wanna add anything, Tom?
I mean, the last full scale was 2016, so this one's scheduled for February 2019, that meets our year requirement for the MGT to be credit possible.
And the training program, this unmanned terrorist system, that's obviously a drone program, so this would allow us to meet all of the legal requirements to utilize a drone program, so have an expert walk us through.
Give it a shot, everybody. We're down, item, regular hearing's fifteen. Sixteen.
Church, council, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, all deal with debt cell on Castle Hills, seventeen being utility system bonds, and eighteen being road system bonds. Sixteen, we have to update the service and assessment plan annually to be able to do that debt issuance. This is District 1G, and I believe, Brenda, that this actually completes all of their authorizations, correct?
So anything on sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen?
David, would you talk a little bit about limiting trucks and what this will allow us to do with intersection, college, and now?
Since Valley Ridge opened, we anticipated this, but since Valley Ridge opened, we've noticed a marked decrease in our traffic on Mill Street, especially during the, you know, morning and afternoon, you know, rush hours, and then also on College Street. Trucks now have the ability, if they're wanting to go north and maybe get on I-35 at Valley Ridge, they don't have to come down College and turn right on Mill anymore. So what we're doing is, we want to limit trucks on that one block of College Street between Keely and Mill, thus, you know, reducing even more the number of trucks we've got turning there, and that's gonna enable us to open up that fourth lane southbound on Mill, and then we'll be able to re-time that signal as well and make it more efficient.
Any questions, Donna?
How long until we see that change?
Once the, once the ordinance goes into effect, we get it signed, we should be able to move fairly quickly with the signal and the restriping.
And then we'll have reports, and we will have a closed session. Okay? Anything else? Brent, you need to be caught up on anything?
No.
Okay. Now, we had you down to give the presentation here. Do you wanna do that?
Yep.
Okay. Ben, he's gonna take that over on that one. And so, that's it, I guess, okay. We'll reconvene at seven o'clock in the council chamber.
Don't wanna take that if you wanna do it.
It's seven o'clock, we'll call tonight's meeting to order. First item of business is the invocation given by, given by Councilman Troyer, followed by the pledge to the American Texas flags by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Jones.
Please join me in the moment of silence, and on this Thanksgiving week, please reflect on what it is about Louisville that you are grateful for. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, city secretary?
Consideration of items relating to the November seventh, 2017 City of Louisville Charter Amendment Election. First item is the canvas of the election returns for the City of Louisville Charter Amendment Election. I'll read the results. Proposition A, for, one thousand two hundred and sixty-four votes, against, two hundred and ninety-nine votes. Proposition number B, for votes, was one thousand two hundred and twenty-one, and against was three hundred and forty-one. We had a total of one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine voters, and both propositions passed. The second item is consideration of a resolution declaring the results of the City of Louisville Charter Amendment Election.
Do you have a motion? A move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries? Thank you. Next, we'll have a presentation by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels. Next, we'll have a presentation by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels.
Okay, I'm going to start off here, this is a letter from the American Planning Association, Texas Chapter, and it is "With great pleasure that the Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association presents the enclosed certificate of achievement for planning excellence to your planning department for 2017. This certificate recognizes the professional planning standards demonstrated by your planning staff and the funding and support exhibited by your city council and Planning and Zoning Commission. More specifically, the City of Louisville has met the chapter's goals for increasing awareness of professional planning, recognizing planning departments which meet certain professionals' requirements, enhancing neighborhood and citizen recognition of planning efforts, encouraging the funding of professional training for commissioners and staff, and aiding in economic development and community image." So, congratulations, and here's the certificate.
I'd like to introduce the planning staff that are with us tonight. We have Planner Jonathan Beckham and Planning Technician Teresa Ernest. Unfortunately, our planner June Sin was unable to be with us tonight as she's on vacation. City Louisville was honored on November the third with thirty-six other cities at the Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association's annual planning conference in Frisco. We were one of thirty-six communities to receive this honor in the state of Texas, so we're very, very proud of that. We do want to thank all of the support that we have received, or continually received, from the city council, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, from the management team. We feel so grateful to work in a city that has adopted such innovative and visionary plans, and furthermore, it's very rare for a city to implement those plans in everything they do, like the City of Louisville does. So we feel very, very fortunate to work in a city that really does things right when it comes to planning. Again, we just thank everyone for all the support, and we are very proud to work for the City of Louisville. Thank you.
City Secretary?
Public hearing number one, continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request on six point six eight acres bounded by East Valley Ridge Boulevard on the northeast side, and Mario Court on the west side, and an ordinance granting a special use permit and four associated variances on the above referenced land. The recommendation is that the city council continue the public hearing to the December eighteenth, 2017 city council meeting.
Continue the public hearing until December eighteenth?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in, oh, counselor? You know anything on this one? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing number two, continued public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from heavy industrial district to specific use landfill accessory uses district and one associated variance on fifteen acres located at sixteen hundred South Railroad Street. The zone change is necessary to accommodate the construction of a new break room and an expansion of the truck wash and service shop. The variance is requested to allow a dead-end water line to exceed six hundred feet. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the zone change by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance and associated variance as set forth above.
Okay. Just want to make a note that Councilman Gilmore is abstaining on this.
Mayor, we have Richard Ludkey, Planning Director, and Richard Domer from Freeman Milliken both present to address any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time? We don't have anything right now. Any discussion? Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance with the associated variances?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning fifteen acres legally described as Lot One, Block A, DFW Recycling and Disposal Facility Edition, located on the east side of Railroad Street approximately two thousand five hundred feet north of Hebron Parkway at sixteen hundred Railroad Street, from heavy industrial district zoning to specific use landfill accessory uses district zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Secretary, go ahead.
Public hearing number three, consideration of an ordinance granting zone change requests from light industrial district to planned development, estate townhouse district, and three associated variances on six point seven six two acres located on the east side of Archer Way approximately four hundred and thirty feet north of Justin Road. The project consists of thirty-eight single-family detached lots. Three variances are requested. One, to allow front-entry driveways. Two, to allow non-radio lot lines along curved streets. And three, to allow a reduced lot width and reduced control of access for a single-family lot. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance and three variances as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Ludkey, Planning Director, and Dale Riddinger from Riddinger and Associates available to address any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the folks here? Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the proposed ordinance with the three associated variances.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately six point seven six two acre tract of land out of the Francis Pierce survey abstract number ten sixteen, located on the east side of Archer Way approximately four hundred and thirty feet north of Justin Road, from light industrial district zoning to planned development estate townhouse district zoning, correcting the official zoning map preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing number four, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from light industrial district to planned development single-family residential district and five associated variances on six point six zero acres located on the west side of McGee Lane, approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet south of Daffodil Lane. The project consists of thirty single-family detached lots. Five variances are requested. One, to allow a sixty-two foot lot width with a forty-foot control of access for Lot Two. Number two, to allow a seven hundred and thirty-seven foot long cul-de-sac. Three, to allow front driveway entry, to allow front-entry driveways. Four, to allow non-radio lots. And five, to allow a fifty-foot right-of-way at the cul-de-sac with a ten-foot street, sidewalk, water and sanitary sewer easement. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the council approve the ordinance and four variances as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Ludkey, Planning Director, and Robert Suraz from RJ S Marine Incorporated.
Okay. Does anybody have a question for the ones who could present? Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance as written with the associated variances.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning an approximately six point six acre tract of land out of the Levi and Sparks survey abstract number eleven thirty-five, located on the west side of McGee Lane approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet south of Daffodil Lane, from light industrial district zoning to planned development single-family residential district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay. Let's continue.
Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor, I've received no cards.
Okay. Have a motion to approve?
Move to approve? Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. City Secretary?
Agenda item fifteen, consideration of an ordinance amending section two dash two oh one by repealing and replacing municipal court credit card convenience fees. The city recently changed service providers for credit card processing for the municipal court operations. This item will change the fee ordinance for the new credit card fee structure. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Excuse me, counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Section Two dash two zero one, fee schedule by repealing and replacing municipal court credit card convenience fees, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item sixteen, consideration of an ordinance updating the service assessment plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Five Project. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID Number Five along with related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the current outstanding assessments and indebtedness. The recommendation is that the city council consider approval of the ordinance as stated above.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Louisville, Texas, updating the assessment service plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Five Project, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item seventeen, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of eleven million three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, City of Louisville Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Utility System Bonds, Series 2017. Denton County Fresh Water Supply District Number One G has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of said bonds for the purpose of acquiring certain water, sewer, and drainage facilities. The recommendation is that the city council consider approval of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counselor?
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of eleven million three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar City of Louisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Utility System Bonds, Series 2017, in accordance with the terms of that Certain Master Trust Agreement and Third Supplemental Trust Agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the Third Supplemental Trust Agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2017 Utility Bonds, approving a bond placement agreement, providing a repealer severability and effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2017 Utility Bonds.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item eighteen, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of five million nine hundred and five thousand dollars, City of Louisville Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Road System Bonds, Series 2017. Denton County Fresh Water Supply District Number One G has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of said bonds for the purpose of acquiring and constructing certain streets and roads. The recommendation is that the city council consider approval of the ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Counselor?
This is, this is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of five million nine hundred and five thousand dollar City of Louisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Road System Bonds, Series 2017, in accordance with the terms of that Certain Master Trust Agreement and Second Supplemental Trust Agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Supplemental Trust Agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2017 Road Bonds, approving a bond placement agreement, providing a repealer severability and an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2017 Road Bonds.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item nineteen, consideration of an ordinance amending section fifteen dash one oh four, Truck Operation Restricted, and section fifteen dash one twenty-six, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Prohibited on Specific Streets. Staff is proposing to restrict trucks on College Street between Mill Street and Keely Avenue, and to prohibit parking at the cul-de-sac at the south end of North Cowan Avenue, just north of the DCTA railroad tracks. The Transportation Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have David Solomon, City Engineer, available for any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of city staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Fifteen, Section Fifteen dash one oh four, by prohibiting the operation of trucks on College Street between Interstate Highway Thirty-five E and Keely Avenue, and amending section fifteen dash one two six by prohibiting parking on a certain segment of North Cowan Avenue, south of Jones Street, providing for repealer severability and a penalty, and providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to reports. We have the fourth quarter investment report from July one, 2017, to September thirtieth, 2017, and the backup. And we'll go down, start with you, Nika. Do you have anything? Okay. Nothing? Yes, Chief?
Yeah, Mayor, my annual reminder, as I'm getting choked up here, we'll start the holiday shopping season after Thanksgiving. Well, in fact, it's already stopped, started online, you know, all the cyber sales have gone on, but if you do end up going to some of our merchants in town to do your shopping, we'd have to urge you, but remember to lock, take, and hide. That means lock your cars. Twenty seventeen, lock your car. Take your valuables if you can, and if you can't do that, at least hide them from sight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, the lake is one point six feet below the conservation pool.
Got to work on that. Clear? Eric, nothing? That's one.
Yes, I have to commend the city staff once again. Holiday stroll on Saturday was a fantastic event. It was very well attended. It went flawlessly. Everybody there seemed to have a great time, and it just turned off incredible, so I got to give kudos to everybody that was involved with that. And I have to say also to some of the councilmen here, I was wary of this date, and I believe Councilman Gilmore and Councilman Ferguson were the ones that suggested this. I was wary of the date, and I was wrong. It turned out to be a great time, great event, and good, good choice selection for this, so thank you, gentlemen.
Just happy holidays to everyone.
Uh, just happy holidays to everyone. We're getting going into holiday season. I want to thank the staff for all their hard work throughout this year to make us look smart up here, or as smart as we can be. I want to especially thank Melinda Goller, who's leading our Youth Action Council. Off to a great start this year. I'm very proud of it.
Good.
Couple of quick things. With holiday comes holiday cooking, and it is a wonderful thing. But if you Google the term fat burg, that's like an iceberg made of fat, you will learn that the grease and all that wonderful stuff we pour down our drains is really not that great for our sewer system. So, we are participating again in the North Texas Holiday Grease Roundup. And if you just go to the city website and type in grease roundup, you'll find out all the information you need to turn that from something that damages our systems into something that is valuable. It gets turned into biodiesel and, and energy. The other thing, speaking of, of holly and jolly and all that other good stuff, Santa will be touring the neighborhoods soon. And another great thing that city staff has done, every year it gets even better, is you'll have the ability to track Santa online. So, all you need to do is go to the city website and type "track Santa", and you will find our map, and it'll show you where Santa is at a particular time. If he misses your neighborhood, he will hit every neighborhood, apartments, single family, you name it. He hits every neighborhood in Lewisville. But if he misses your neighborhood, you can always use the Santa tracker to hop in the car and go catch him. I'm sure he'll wave and throw candy at you if you're standing on the street side as well. So, with that, happy holidays as we begin the season, and thank you so much for the opportunity to serve.
When does that start?
That's going to start on the 5th of December, Tuesday, weather permitting.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, nothing? Okay. Neil?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, got a lot of things coming up. Holiday, Old Town Holiday Stroll. We're going to have, that's what the label says here, the Pancake Breakfast Motorcycle Toy Run. Got the parade starting at 12:30. All of the applications to be in the parade had to be turned in by today, so we'll find out pretty quick who's going to be in that. Fellow named Tyler Marco and a band named Little Skinnerd will be performing. There's going to be a lot of stuff going on that's on December 2nd in Old Town. The Lake Cities Ballet is performing The Nutcracker in two shows. And that's, that's presented, I'm sorry, that's not Lake Cities. They're doing it too, but they're not doing it here in town, so I guess I shouldn't mention that one. They had to, they had to move to a nearby city because we don't have a high school with adequate facilities. Anyway, so this is Majestic Ballet, different ballet company, doing The Nutcracker at the MCL Grand, November 25th, two shows. And then there's a current display gift of art. There'll be a reception on December 9th. And then Impulse Dance Project is doing a program called Snow, December 9th and 10th, two different showings. Yoga in the Plaza will continue through November. Might be cold out there, but. And Acoustic Jam always every Friday and always amazing in a big crowd. And I have to comment, last night we had Black Box Red River Songwriters Series and packed the house. And you could have put probably half the audience on stage because they were all recognized performers who showed up from far and away to come see this show at our facility. So, we really drew in some, some brand names for audience, which was kind of incredible. I kept thinking they'd just put them all up there and let them all sing, but. So, Art Exhibits Gift of Art opens December 2nd. And then, and I mentioned the reception for that on the 9th, and then Holiday Magic also opens the 2nd. The Gift of Art will be in the main art gallery, and Holiday Magic will be in the north corridor. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor?
Well, as, as usual, my, my remarks are already taken, but I would like to reemphasize. I do applaud the staff for the excellent job done with the holiday stroll yet on, on Saturday. I had to leave briefly between about 5:00 and 6:25. And when I left, there was a nice crowd, but when I came back, I couldn't find a place to walk. So, it was, it was really packed. And again, a very well-done event. And I too had some questions about the date, but I was wrong, so. Secondly, I echo what Councilman Ferguson said about the Red River Songwriters event last night. It was excellent, and if you missed it, I'm sorry.
It's a good show.
Counselor? Good job on getting all the election stuff coordinated with us and with the county and all. So, it, it worked out well. Okay, thank you. Officer, thanks for your contributions to the community. Thank you.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
It's all said.
Okay. Okay. We'll now go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter 13, Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, and Item 2, Section 551.087, Economic Development. Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We'll go into closed session now. We'll reconvene. Is any action to be taken?
Yes, Mayor. Move to authorize the city manager or her designee to sign all documents necessary to purchase the approximately 0.76 acres located at 912 Timber Creek, Lewisville, Texas, known as Timber Creek Acres Block B, Lot 12-A in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for $27,500, and to purchase the approximately 0.46 acres located at 914 Timber Creek, Lewisville, Texas, known as Timber Creek Acres Block B, Lot 11, in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for $22,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes?
Move to adjourn.
Motion is second. All those in favor to adjourn, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.